I would like to call the regular scheduled meeting for Fairfield County Council to order Monday, September the 11th, 2023 at 6:00 PM, Wentzboro, South Carolina. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Happy love in states and cities, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Now we are down to the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on approval of the agenda. Next, we are down to invocation by Reverend Jonathan Bell of Friendship Community Church.
Swan Correction, that's St. Peter Community Church. St. Peter, yeah. God our Father, we thank you for your grace and your mercy. We thank you, Lord, for your goodness and your compassion, for allowing us in your presence one more time. Father, we pray that your spirit will dwell within us in this meeting. Lord God, I pray that you endowed this council with wisdom and understanding, knowledge from on high. Give them compassion, God, in the decisions that they make for this county. Bless the residents of this county, and we'll continue to strive together to do the things that's pleasing in your sight. We need you in a time like this, and we pray, God, that your grace will pour out on Fairfield County, and we'll be able to do your blessed will and glorify your son. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Pastor, I'd like to apologize, that's my fault.
Okay.
Thank you Reverend Bell, and I would like to correct that Reverend Jonathan Bell is from St. Peter Community Church. Thank you so much. Next, we are down to the approval of minutes. Regular meeting, eight twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-three. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on approval of minutes. Number six, public presentations, none. Number seven, first public comment session, Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. No one signed up to speak, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Next, we are down to public hearings. Item A, an ordinance by Fairfield County Council to amend and restate ordinance number six seventy-four, roads, highways, and bridges, and other matters related thereto. We will open this hearing at six oh four PM. Dr. Roberts.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, no one signed up to speak.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. We will close this hearing at six oh four PM. Item B, an ordinance establishing the millage rate for Fairfield County for the fiscal year beginning July the first, two thousand and twenty-three. We will open this public hearing at six oh four PM. Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, no one signed up to speak.
We will close this public hearing at six oh five PM. We are down to item C, an ordinance providing for the purchase and acquisition of security systems, motor vehicles, and related equipment to be used for public safety and public works and other equipment. Authorizing the county administrator to prescribe the form and details of the lease purchase financing of the equipment, providing for the payment of the lease purchase financing and other related matters. We will open this public hearing at six oh five PM.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, no one signed up to speak.
We will close the hearing at six oh five PM. Now we are down to nine eight, ordinance resolutions and orders, third and final reading, ordinance eight twenty, an ordinance by Fairfield County Council to amend and restate ordinance number six seventy-four, roads, highways, bridges, and other matters related thereto.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, can I just get a brief description for...
Information.
Yes, informational purpose of...
Mr. Morgan.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of council. What we have before you this evening is ordinance number eight twenty. Basically, this is just an update to the already currently existing ordinance of Fairfield County. That's ordinance number six seventy-four, and what it does is it changes some of the definitional sections, and it talks about the maintenance of some of the roadways, both the public roadways and the private roadways in the county. Talks about some of the issues relating to trees that were previously on private property, has removed some of that, so that way it kind of clears and streamlines things, both from a legal standpoint as well from an operational standpoint. The administration and myself has had input with Mr. Burrows, who's the Public Works Director, and he's approved of these changes to allow for the county road crews to be able to better perform their job and services.
Yeah, and this will also eliminate the maintenance of the common drives which are...
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Right.
If there's no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect six one on ordinance eight twenty. Now we are down to nine B, third and final reading, ordinance eight twenty-one, an ordinance establishing the millage rate for Fairfield County for the fiscal year beginning July the first, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, would you have sort of an explanation as to why we have to go rates?
Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, council. This particular ordinance establishing the millage rate is an eight-mill increase, and as we discussed during the budget sessions, several of them, that the reason for it is because we're wanting to enter into a lease purchase, one of the reasons, a lease purchase agreement, to buy necessary emergency equipment. Four pieces of the equipment is for fire, six for sheriff, one for the detention center. And please keep in mind, over the past two years, council has not put, had budgeted any type of equipment, emergency equipment or any type of equipment, in the budget, so we are actually behind. We're coming to find out that this particular equipment is taking six-plus months when we order them, sometimes up to a year. So also if you're taking into consideration that the equipment was not authorized in the last two years, so you can tell that we are actually behind in ordering our equipment. But that's one of the main reasons for the millage increase, and also you hadn't increased meals in probably about, I believe, six years, so it's time.
Yeah, I'm one that's always against the tax increase, but in this case, to provide service to our citizens or as first responders and all that, and like Ms. Johnson said, this hadn't been kept up to date, and we're just behind, and that's the reason I'm supporting it.
If there's no other discussion, all those in favor of ordinance, third reading of ordinance eight twenty-one? All those opposed?
Aye.
Let the record reflect four three on ordinance, it passes four three, ordinance eight twenty-one. We are down to nine C, second reading of ordinance eight twenty-two, an ordinance providing for the purchase and acquisition of security systems, motor vehicles, and related equipment to be used for public safety and public works and other equipment. Authorizing the county administrator to prescribe the form and details of the lease purchase financing of the equipment, providing for the payment of the lease purchase financing and other related matters.
Most to approve, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion?
Let me just get a brief description.
Ms. Johnson.
Again, council, this is the lease purchase program to purchase necessary emergency equipment, as I've just previously stated. Four items, pieces of equipment for fire, six for the sheriff office, one for the detention center, is approximately three point five million dollars instead of the county having to pay that out all in one fiscal year. It will be paid back over seven years, so we won't have to pay out the whole three point five. So that's going to average about five of those meals.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. There's no other discussion, all those in favor of second reading, ordinance eight twenty-two?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero, ordinance eight twenty-two passes. Nine D, second reading, ordinance eight twenty-three, an ordinance by Fairfield County Council approving the conveyance of property by Fairfield County to the Fairfield County Forfeited Land Commission and other matters related thereto.
Most to approve, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I think it would be nice to have an explanation about that as well.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of council, what you have before you tonight, ordinance number eight twenty-three, this is an ordinance that county council had previously in 2020 had received properties from the Forfeited Land Commission. The Forfeited Land Commission is a statutory creation, and basically when properties go up for tax sale, those properties that don't get bid upon, basically the very first or their opening bid is by the Forfeited Land Commission, and so in that instance, if nobody else bids on those properties, the Forfeited Land Commission takes those properties. Back in 2020, council and through the then-administration decided they wanted to take some of those properties, because there may be some uses that county would have as it relates to the properties that were in the possession of the Forfeited Land Commission. Subsequently, those properties have been found, whether they're, and this is an administration decision, but basically they're not usable or not feasible for use by the county, whether it was for its intended purpose or otherwise, and what this ordinance does is basically conveys these properties back to the Forfeited Land Commission, because that way the Forfeited Land Commission can then have an online auction process and turn around and sell those properties, hopefully to a winning bidder, and that way the county receives those proceeds, and then those properties are also back on the tax rolls and therefore become income or generating a revenue, the tax revenue for the county. So that's the purpose of this ordinance.
If there's no further discussion on second reading, ordinance eight twenty-three, then we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect, ordinance eight twenty-three, second reading, passes seven two zero. Next, we are down to item E, second reading, ordinance number eight twenty-four, Dr. Roberts.
An ordinance of Fairfield County Council authorizing an amendment to the agreement for development of joint county industrial park by and between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Kershaw County, South Carolina, providing for the inclusion of additional property in Kershaw County as part of the joint county industrial park and other matters related.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of council, ordinance number eight twenty-four before you this evening, this is an economic development-based ordinance. Well, what ends up happening is Fairfield County has what's known as a multi-county industrial park with Kershaw County. It's not a physical location, it's just a territory that has been established by both of the county councils for Fairfield and Kershaw County. And what happens is, is for example, in this instance, Kershaw County has an economic development project that they want to put into this park, and by virtue of it being in the park, Kershaw County is going to get ninety-nine percent of the revenues from the fee in lieu of tax agreement, but Fairfield County is going to get one percent of those revenues without having to do anything apart from approving this particular project through this ordinance. Likewise, there are other times wherein Fairfield County will have the project, and they will partner with, whether it's, we've had it with Fairfield County, Richland County, et cetera, Fairfield gets ninety-nine percent of the revenues and then transfers one percent to the joint, the park partner, and that's what's going on with this ordinance here.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. If there's no further discussion on second reading, ordinance eight twenty-four, we will take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Second reading, ordinance eight twenty-four, passes seven to zero. Item L, first reading by title only, ordinance eight twenty-five, no discussion, an ordinance by Fairfield County Council authorizing the purchase of real property that meets necessary requirements for said property to be used as a suitable location for a wastewater treatment site with discharge into the Broad River and other matters related thereto.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. There's no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect, first reading, ordinance eight twenty-five, passes seven to zero. Item G, first reading by title only, ordinance eight twenty-six, an ordinance by Fairfield County Council authorizing the execution and delivery of an amendment to a special source revenue credit agreement by and between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Healthcare SCLLC relating to, without limitation, the provision of special source revenue credits and other matters related thereto.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. There's no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect, first reading, ordinance eight twenty-six, passes seven to zero. Ten Board and Commission minutes, that's for information only. Eleven Board and Commission appointments, there's none. Twelve old business, we have a Public Services and Development Committee update. Ms. Johnson.
Yes, council, we had a meeting on September seventh, and our next meeting is on the twelfth at five fifteen PM. Had a lot of recommendations coming through on that last meeting, so we're hoping that we'll kind of narrow everything down. So just a reminder, tomorrow, five fifteen.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Down to number thirteen, new business, none. Fourteen county administrators' report. Ms. Johnson.
I want to introduce you all to our new community development director, Ms. Carter Thompson. She's a native of Georgia, residing both in Valdosta and Atlanta. She's a graduate of Georgia State University, Andrew Young School of Policy Studies focusing on urban planning and economic development. She also earned her Master's of Business Administration from Brunel University. She's worked in multiple planning disciplines such as transportation planning, regional planning, long and short-range planning. The scope of her experience spans over twenty-three years, and we are happy to have her on Team Fairfield. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Just a reminder on accommodations and hospitality tax application deadline, the application is on our website, it went out on September first, it's due October thirty-first. We will select recipients on November seventeenth to bring forth to council, and then on December thirty-first, we will notify the recipients. And to the applicants, please keep in mind that the package should be complete with all the information that we are requesting inside of the application, and if it is not, we consider that to be incomplete, and it will not be considered. Okay.
Good afternoon, I want to give council, make you aware of the Economic Development Administration, the EDA's Recompute Pilot Grant Program. The Catawba Regional Council of Governments and the Central Midlands Council of Governments held an information session on August twenty-ninth about EDA's Recompute Pilot Grant Program. The Recompute Pilot Program will invest two hundred million dollars in persistently distressed communities. The program is broken up in two phases. Phase one funds strategy development grants to come up with your strategy plan to address the needs in the areas. The Catawba Council of Governments is applying for a phase one grant to develop a strategy to increase prime-age workforce participation, that's those aged twenty-five to fifty-four, in Chester, Fairfield, and Union Counties. All three counties have a low workforce participation but are in a region with industry announcements that total over five thousand in new jobs. The grant will address identified barriers that have made people not participate or leave the workforce. If awarded a phase one grant, the region can submit for a phase two grant that will fund up to eight projects from twenty million to fifty million dollars. Phase two will focus on land acquisition, construction, opportunity hubs, and workforce training. There is no match requirement for either grant, it's just direct investment into these three counties if awarded the grants. The Catawba Council of Government's main goal is to develop opportunity hubs in each county, locations that can be used for childcare assistance and/or workforce training or both altogether. They are asking for a letter of support from partners identifying what the partners can provide as part of this participation. Fairfield County has identified land within the Fairfield Commerce Center that was previously considered for workforce development, and along with the county has buildings that could possibly be retrofitted, that could also be these kind of opportunity hubs. So we'd like to send a letter of support for the phase one planning grant, it doesn't bind us to anything, it just says we have these buildings, we have this land available, and therefore if they receive the planning grant, then they'll work to make a more detailed plan about how they would create these opportunity hubs, and then if we receive the phase two grant, then it would be full construction or renovation costs to develop these. And so therefore we'd like to at least get the letter of support, the application's due in October, to get the letter back to the Catawba Region saying we're willing to participate, we have some properties that they can consider as a detail of a full fleshed-out plan. And no questions on that, I'll move on, just to let everyone know that the land ordinance, we're going through that update, we're holding a public meeting on the Land Management Ordinance Update Thursday, that's this Thursday, September fourteenth at six o'clock PM. Our land ordinance outlines development requirements in the county, it has not been updated since 2012, but we're not doing a full overhaul, we're focusing on strategic and content-oriented review and revisions, we're trying to simplify, reorganize, and clarify what's in our current land ordinance. So it's not to do a complete overhaul, but it's just to make it more simplified, clarify the zoning districts, what are, what's allowed in each district, things like that, to make it more user-friendly. So the public meeting, that will be this Thursday, it'll start off at six o'clock with a quick presentation, just kind of overview on what we're doing, and then move into the gym where it'll be more of a roundtable discussion, there'll be tables with information set up so it can be viewed as like a drop-in. So if a citizen can't be there right at six, if they come at six-thirty or seven o'clock, it can still be a drop-in, they can come in, get more information, and give feedback during that public meeting. And it will be here, yes, two fifty North Walnut, we'll start here, but we'll also move over to the gym, where we'll have the information about where we can get feedback from residents as we go through the updates.
If no questions, the last under-county administrator report is the August twenty-twenty-three finance report, it's already in your packets. As usual, if you have any questions or comments, please give me a call, and if you need more detailed information, just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Williams. Next, we are down to item fifteen, clerked the council's report, none. Item sixteen, county council time, any council members wish to be heard? Mr. Robinson.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I was, I wouldn't say confronted, but I was questioned last meeting in reference to retroing taxes. I would like Ms. Johnson, our administrator, to please explain that, if she would, please.
Yes, Mr. Robinson, we do not retro taxes. I think because it said July one, twenty-twenty-three on one of our agendas, we don't go back to July one, twenty-twenty-three to retro taxes. The only reason July one, twenty-twenty-three was on there is the beginning of our fiscal year. Tax calculations are based on the assessed value of your property, so, and I think also there's a misunderstanding about a millage ordinance wasn't done at the same time of a budget ordinance, they do not have to be done at the same time. Actually, I was here nineteen years before, and it was never done during the same time, it's normally a few months after that, so we do not retro taxes based on the assessed value of your property. And we tried to get the tax auditor the millage resolution signed at least by September so they can have enough time to produce the taxes, because the first date that they are due is January, so there's no retro of any taxes.
Thank you.
I got a question, and I hate to bring this up because it's almost like a bad word, but the audit... a bad word, but the auditor, when I, just don't want to let it happen again, that's all, and I know, I know you won't, but I'm just wondering what, that we're, when are, when it will start, the process going, so we don't let it happen again, that's all.
Actually, we're working with our auditing firm. When we finished the last audit, we had a conversation about them coming in during the interim to start working on looking, examining some of our records ahead of time, and so he's very agreeable to that, but originally, we were put on his schedule for November, and I asked that, you know, he reconsidered that and to get us in earlier than that. So we are actually working with him to get in earlier. So we're doing our best.
Y'all, I know y'all are, I just hope they will.
We really are doing our best.
Thank you.
Ms. Waringen.
I do. People have been asking about what we have done in the past eight months, if they don't seem to see anything that's been accomplished, so I thought I would name off a few things that have happened in the past eight months in this county. We finally decided on the location of a wastewater treatment plant. We received ten million dollars from the Skip Grant for the Winsboro Connected Project. Our Fire Service Director applied for and received ten thousand dollar grant from the Fairfield Electric Co-op to purchase the smoking carbon monoxide alarms for our citizens, and we are now partnering with the nonprofit organizations to get more of these alarms installed, installed in the homes of all of our Fairfield County citizens. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was received from the state for our second installment payment for a firefighter air pack replacement. The first one, we didn't have to pay for, the two hundred and fifty thousand, and the second one, we won't have to pay for because we got that in the grant. The Fire Department has hired four full-time new firefighters, which is great to get firefighters out in the county where I live. In recognition of our veterans, we approved Veterans Day as a holiday. We have established an accommodations slash hospitality tax application process, and that is now ongoing. We made revisions to the council reimbursement policy, which reduced our council budget by twenty percent. There is no mileage reimbursement in the county, no internet, and that saved the taxpayers seventy-six thousand dollars a year. Our roads look better because of a joint effort to pick up litter between public works, building maintenance, detention center, and the SCDOT. We have gotten compliments about it, but you've got to understand, that's an everyday thing, because, you know, you could go down the road and it looks really good today, and then somebody throw out a mattress and they come down through there cutting the grass, and it's just everywhere, until the people get, I don't know if you'd call it educated or what you would call it about not throwing out trash, it's just, it's just a sad situation. But we are working on it. We approved emergency vehicles in the budget after two years of the capital equipment not being budgeted, but we got, still got to wait like nine to twelve months to get the big emergency vehicles. EMS has hired two new employees. We hired a community development director with over twenty-five years of experience. Megasite Mass Grading Project is now complete. Economic Development Strategic Planning Process is underway. Construction has begun on a new speculative building at the Fairfield Commerce Center, and what that will be, it'll just be like a shell of a building, is what I understand. So if a business wants to come in, they're that far along, and they can finish up the building and put whatever they want to on the inside. And also, an industry appreciation event has been planned for later this year. We're in the process of updating our personnel manual, we're updating our land management ordinance, and that is a public meeting on the fourteenth. We're updating the animal ordinance, we're conducting a class and compensation plan for employees, we're conducting a housing study that will be a public meeting scheduled for October. Our courthouse renovations, phase three, will start in early twenty twenty-four. Our River Road Fire Station is almost done. The Black Stock Mini Park, which the previous council started that, and that money came from the Arbor Funds, construction's almost complete on that, and all of our emergency departments are focusing on both retaining the employees and coming up with a way to, to keep the ones that got some kind of an idea so they won't, they won't be going to another county. County Council approved the transfer and additional four hundred thousand dollars from the Megasite Mass Grading Project to the Ridgeway Recreation Center. Would you, Ms. Laurel, would you please explain that, that that's not a loan, so? Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, there was a resolution done by the prior council to transfer four hundred thousand dollars from the Mass Grading Project to cover the needs of the Ridgeway Recreation Project. This is not a loan. Both of these pots of money are Dominion monies. So it was approved to take four hundred thousand from this pot of Dominion money and transfer from one project to another project. That's simply what it is. It is not a loan.
Okay, it seems to just be a misunderstanding there. This council wants to work as a team with all of our, with all of our people in the whole county, and we, we don't want to be at odds with you, but, but there's got to be a mutual respect so we can all try to get along. If you have a question, if you have a suggestion, if you have an idea, if you have a problem, call your representative. If your representative won't answer his phone, there's seven of us sitting up here, and we all got a telephone. If you can't get us on the phone, email us. Come see us in person, we are here to help you. If we will all work together, surely we can all, we can start solving some of these problems. We're not trying to be above you, because I know we're sitting up here. I liked it better in the other building when we're all down there looking at each other, but, you know, here's the stage, and this is where we got to sit, unless we're going all gather out in the yard. So we're not trying to be above you, but I just urge you to, to call, talk, email, whatever, whichever one of us is your person. If you can't get them, jeepers, call me, I'll try to get you some answers, okay? That's all I've got to say. Thank y'all.
Yes, first, I'd like to thank you, Ms. Waringen, for, for your comments. I think they, you know, well warranted and really expressed, expressed what the other council members feel, and that was a very good synopsis of what we've done. I'd just like to announce that on October fifth, the River Road Fire Station will be dedicated at eleven A. M., so we're inviting the community to come out to see our new building, and, you know, we'll be getting away, getting started. It'll be a part of the southeastern fire station. Also, we have new hours at the Midford Recreation Center. We've had a number of requests, especially as it relates to pickleball and basketball, and we've been able to increase those hours to accommodate the community. Thank you.
Can you, can you put the loudspeaker if you have?
I most certainly will, thank you. I don't have them with me right now, I can see if I can pull them up on my phone.
Just one last thing, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Robinson.
Let Ms. Waringen kind of juggle my memory on this. During budget season, we talked about kind of doing something for the coaches, the director. So just to remind the administration, if we could, bring that back up, doing something for the coaches, maybe getting with the Director of Recreation, maybe we can do something for the coaches once a year, bring that back up. I know you, I know y'all got a lot on y'all plate.
I had already spoken with the director about that, and he was planning to do something for the coaches.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, when you mentioned it last time, so I'll remind him. Thank you.
And I will be, I will be brief. I just want to thank everyone for being here tonight. Council, we have a intergovernmental meeting in Jenkinsville on nine twenty, September the twentieth, and I think it is six P. M., but we'll make sure, but it's September the twentieth in Jenkinsville for a intergovernmental meeting. And I want to say this, at this time, the majority of council has agreed to again temporarily remove the second public comment session. We will possibly revisit this issue again in the near future. Council does value input from citizens, and I will repeat that, council does value input from citizens on topics related to improving our county, but we cannot allow public disrespect or disruption of the county council meeting itself. We ask that going forward, that all public comments be done in a professional and respectful Now we are down to executive session. Item, in executive session, we will, item A, receipt of legal advice relating to pending legal claims against the county and the proposed settlement of Fairfield County versus Taylor Logging and Tree Service LLC and Kiss Express LLC. Civil action number twenty nineteen dash CP dash twenty dash zero zero three nine zero, pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash seventy A. two, and this will be an action item. Item B, receipt of legal advice relating to the negotiations incident to the proposed purchase of property that meets the necessary requirements for the property to be used as a suitable location for a wastewater treatment site pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash seventy A. two. Do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded in the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect, seven zero. We are now in executive session. We are now in executive session.